I am asking if we can start. This may be published, so...
Yes, we're on now.
All right, wonderful. So at this point in time, we have the call to order. And if you could please rise and pay attention to Councilwoman Hiller, or do your vocation to be followed by the pleasure of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce this evening Pastor DC Clark from Shiloh Baptist Church. Shiloh was founded as a church in 1879, and the stone church that we all are familiar with on the corner of 12th and Buchanan was built in 1926. It's a national historic landmark since last year, or two years ago. The church is part of the Kansas State Missionary Baptist Association, and currently is involved in a bi-weekly mobile food pantry that Pastor Clark tells me it's every other Wednesday, so it'll be tomorrow. And people are lined up on foot and with bicycles and cars, and it's really making a difference in community, and thank you for that. Pastor Clark?
Let us pray. Most gracious, holy, eternal, all-wise God, we've come to know you and love you as our heavenly Father. We thank you for grace and mercy. We pray for wisdom and guidance as we travel along this narrow way. We pray that you would be in our midst here this evening. We pray that you would loose the spirit of forgiveness, love, healing, compassion, and righteousness, bind selfish ambitions. Let there be unity, harmony, same page, one accord, like mine. We pray for a willingness to listen and respect for one another. Pray that you would bless the city, bless the mayor, city manager, city council, commissioners, police chief, fire chief. We lift up our school superintendent. Pray for all of the school administrators. Pray for the teachers. Most of all, we pray for the young people. Watch over them, keep them with your keeping power. Pray that you would grant our petition. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now move on to the roll call.
Mayor DeLa Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Akala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We have 10 present.
Okay, now we move on to the presentations. Councilman Padilla, or Chair of the CCC?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I'd like to introduce three people that I've been working with, and I know are very, very busy, and will continue to be busy right up until the end of this month, and trying to bring a complete count to the census, focusing on Kansas as a state, and particularly on Topeka. They've been very helpful, working along with staff, Monique Gaudet, in identifying those areas that need special attention. And tonight their presentation, I hope, will bring that focus to us so that we can finish this census with a bang and not leave anyone out. So I'd like to introduce Dorothy Karnowski, Melinda Stanley, and Carlos Oguia, part of a team that has been running back and forth across the state, trying to make sure our numbers are correct. So if they would please present to us today, I think they have a lot of valuable information to share. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you all for having us. As Councilmen indicated, our team has been running, and we now intend to stop until the end of the races is done. I'm married to a track coach, and this is the time where we give it all we've got. We are going to pull in all the stops. Two of us also are Topecans. I'm a lifelong Topecan. I am Melinda, the one part of the group. Born and raised in Topeka. I have this privilege to work with the city of Topeka and the Complete Camp Committee. And our team has had such an inspired time working with so many Topeka leaders that have come to the table to help champion this great city. So first and foremost, thank you, Councilmen and Mayor, and so many of you that have been involved. We certainly appreciate it. I'm going to try to share my experience, and while I'm doing that, Dorothy, Carlos, would you please introduce yourselves?
Thank you. I'm Dorothy Karnowski. I'm the other Topecan here. I'm a lifelong Topecan, but I've been here since about the sixth grade. I'm an early breath. So we made our home in a lot of different states, but thankful to be able to call Topeka home officially.
Good afternoon. Actually, good evening. My name is Carlos Oguia Diaz. I also work with the census. I cover the entire 105 counties. I primarily focus on the Latino immigrant refugee and African-American communities. I was just in Wyandotte County today, and I'm very happy to be here, and I'm very passionate about the census. I came to Kansas through the military. I was an infantryman for 15 years. My last duty station was Fort Riley. Went to K-State as an undergrad and went to law school at the University of Kansas, and I am back in Kansas, trying to count everybody.
Thank you for your service, Dor.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
So we count Carlos as a... We're recruiting him to become a Topecan. I'm just going to put that up there.
Gladly accept.
Second motion.
So what I hope to... What we hope to provide for you today is some insight on where we are in the count, some of the things that we are still working on in Topeka, some non-responsive areas, and also provide some inspiration to help keep this going, to provide some motivation for things that we can do within the city yet to ensure that we count everyone who is living in Topeka. And not... We need to put our... On the experiment, and keep going for the next at least 22 days. So our constitutional mission, as you all well know, is to count everyone. Significantly a simple task, but we all know this year has provided unprecedented challenges, operational disruptions, and interesting twists and turns that have... At times, it weakened our ability to get out and count folks and our inability to be in public with people to ensure that everyone is aware and that this is going along. Our mission is to count everyone once, only once in the right place. That has been our mission since we began working with the Topeka Complete Camp Committee almost a year... Once it would be 13 months ago, and it remains our mission today. We count everyone living here, regardless of race, regardless of background, regardless of citizenship status. Our Topeka... Is to count everyone. And also, as you well know, it has a tenure impact. It impacts how billion of rural funding dollars are distributed and how representation is distributed at the local, state, and national levels. So it's never been more important to be included in this camp. And obviously, there is a tenure impact. Our Topeka Complete Camp Committee, with incredible leadership from Councilman Oguia, has been so passionate to make sure that people know we want to make Topeka the best place it can be now, in 2025, and in 2030. So what do we want Topeka to be like in 2030? I'd like for you to hang on to that thought as we go through this, because what we do today and in the next 22 days will impact what Topeka is like in 2030. And we still have an opportunity to see. So currently, we are going door to door. We call it enumeration. You call it census taping. Our people are out knocking on doors across Topeka to encourage those that have yet to fill out the census to do so. We sent a final mailer, and that was to be sent the end of August, early this month, in September, that included a paper questionnaire. Those mailers went to all non-responsive households. We've also started emailing households. We... And we're emailing those households that are in tracts, that are under 50% for self-response. And we are emailing everyone in those tracts, whether they've responded or not. Finally, we've also started to phone non-responsive. And we did not expect to be calling households or emailing them. We are doing that now. So be aware that some of our operations, as things have happened to change, our operations have started to change. Finally, one other date to be aware of is that we will be doing service-based enumeration, which includes those locations that are things like campgrounds, private mobile areas, and our homeless count. So those activities, those operations, will take place in our community between September 22nd and the 24th. And we've been working with both the city and the Topeka Rescue Mission to get locations and to conduct that count. Okay, so finally, I've mentioned this several times. We have 22 days. So the only thing that I want to point out on the non-response follow-up for you is that we do hire. The staff that are doing this in Topeka are Topecans from Topeka. They're working in our community. They're following those local health required guidelines. And they will go to each door if they have not yet responded. For those that haven't responded and don't respond while we're there, we will leave a packet that indicates someone was there and encourage them to respond. The staff that are going out should have identification. They'll have a photo ID badge and other branded materials, such as an iPhone and/or a bag that designates them as a Census Bureau employee. And the number is there should there be any concerns. So let's get into a little bit of data as far as how we, as a state, city and local tracts are responding to the census. This is as of September 3rd. So all the data provided today is from September 3rd. Okay, we, as a state, are ranking 15th. We have been in the top 10 for the vast majority of this operation. But now we are at 15th, which is remarkably good. You can see our state self-response rate on the 3rd was 68.8%. And in 2010, we were at 70%. So we have a ways to go. And self-response in Topeka, as of September 3rd, we were at 67.5%. That means we have captured 2/3 of our city that has self-responded to the census. Now, I want to make sure to explain self-response. Self-response means that someone in a household called, completed their survey, or went online and responded to the census. So 67.5% of Topecans had self-responded. In 2010, that rate was 70.4 at completion. So things like skilled nursing homes, college dorms, any kind of community living situation is not considered self-response. So I want to just make sure that you're a little aware, okay? Also, when we enumerate an area, when we go door to door to door, and then they do self-respond, if they self-respond themselves without the enumerator, that is considered self-response. But if they do it through the enumerator that's at their door, that would not be counted as self-response. All right, so this gives you some feel for how the top 10 cities and counties in our state and their response rates. You can see from self-response by county that Shawnee County is in the top 10. We're 10 at 71.4% as of September 3rd. And self-response by city, this just gives you the top 10 cities and what those response rates are. Topeka's self-response rate was 67.5%. So you can see we're a little behind. So here, I want to point out that the cost of undercounting is in our community. This data is pulled from the Kansas Counts website. Many of you may be aware that the League of Kansas Municipalities is driving the Kansas Counts Initiative statewide. And they have created these infograms to provide community-level data for each Kansas community. So that's the source of this data. Now, the infographic shows that, according to the Kansas Counts data, that one household... Missing one household has a huge impact on our funding. The median household size in Topeka is 2.31 people, 2.31 individuals. So when you calculate that out, I provided what it looks like to undercount 100 and what it looks like to count at 1,000. Now, also, if we take our estimated population, and this estimated population number came from our own Census Bureau estimation based on the American Community Survey. If we use that number and take 67.5% of that, we know that as of September 3rd, we're still missing over 40,000 people. So if you extrapolate that out, you can see that we have a lot at stake here. And we also have a lot of opportunity. I like to think of challenges as... So here, I have posted the self-response map. And unfortunately, we do not have total response data by the tract, by this census tract. So I don't have any of that data to share. So our best data to share with you regarding response is the self-response map. And this map is publicly available, and the link is embedded here. So feel free, anytime you want, to go look at how the community is responding online. There are 46 tracts in the Shawnee County and Topeka vicinity. And for our purposes tonight, I wanted you to have a visual of where these tracts are. And what is posted on the map is the tract number or ID. And that's associated in the online map so you can tell what tract it is. I've also included some street names on this map. So you have a frame of reference on where they... Where these tracts are located. And the color coding on the map, that color coding represents response rate. So the darker the orange, the lower the response rate. The darker the blue, gray, purple... I'm not sure how it'll look on your screen, but the darker the blue or purple color, the higher the response rate, okay? The response rates that are in yellow, that are asterisk on this map, are the highest responding tracts as of September 3rd. They are generally at the... In the upper 80s for response rate. You can see I put the self-response range for our community there. The top end was 89.6%, okay? And the bottom range was 37.2. So on this map, if you look at the very center where there's kind of a darker orange color, those would be... That are the slower responding tracts, okay? Good news, 16 of these tracts have met or exceeded their 2010 response rate. That's great. 14 were nearly to 2010 self-response. That's great. 26 of these tracts have a response rate of over 70%. 15 are over 80%. But Carlos, Dorothy, and I may not be happy until we get to 100. We are not going to let off the gas. We're going to continue to make progress. So these are... I want to just talk for a minute about those lower responding areas. This is where we really feel like we should focus effort and inspire response. Track 40 is a long tract in the middle. So that's the one that's at 37.2%. And I'm going to have... My colleague Dorothy said she would take you through some of these individual tracts. Know that if you have any questions... I'm going to take you back just for a second. If you have any questions on any of the tracts in our community and/or you want more information, we can provide that as well. We probably just don't have time to drill through all of them tonight. So Dorothy, if you want to start sharing a little bit more about each one of those lower responding areas... Let me just say one more thing before I turn that over. Dorothy's going to take you through each individual tract, but I will tell you that core group of tracts that you see is bounded by 21st Street on the south, Washburn on the west. On the east, there's a bound around the Shawnee County line and Willard Airport. That part, okay? And then Adams with Track 12. And then Track 29 is down in its own little area. So I'll let Dorothy hit that one with you as well. So Dorothy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. The first track we're looking at, of course, we're going from lowest response rate to highest within these low-response tracts. When we look at the street overlay on Track 40, we can see those boundaries are basically from the river to southwest 21st Street and between Tyler and Brainer Trafficway. So as of September 3rd, as Melinda mentioned, the response rate is 37.1% for Track 40. That benchmark, the 2010 data there, they were at 54.6% on their final response... Self-response rate in 2010. So we have some work to do in that particular area. So as we start going through these, I'll kind of get through them quickly, but it lets you have a visual on these neighborhoods that are within these tracts. And keeping an eye on that to kind of get a gauge for your familiarity with these neighborhoods, be thinking about what the demographic data is for each of these areas, some things that you might perceive as an obstacle for folks Topecans in these communities to respond to the census or to want to respond to the census. And when I get through with the data, my Carlos Oguia Diaz will come in and give you some ideas about how we can all overcome those obstacles that we may see there so that we can get our count to that 100%. On the next slide... If Melinda, you could push that next one. Thank you. On Track 5, those physical boundaries you see are southwest 7th to southwest 12th. Again, it's between that Washburn boundary up to Tyler. And their self-response rate right now is sitting at 40.7%. Their benchmark from 2010 was the 48.6. So definitely have some work to do in that area. And again, it's... Sorry, just making sure that you can see those street overlays so you can get a gauge for what neighborhoods are in those tracts. On Track 11, we're bounded by basically Northeast River Road to Southeast 10th, and then Brainer Trafficway to Deer Trafficway. Their response rate right now, self-response rate's 45.8%. That 2010 benchmark, 54.1%. Getting a little closer on that one. Track number 4, it's our next one. And that is bounded by southwest 12th to southwest 21st Street. Again, Washburn to Topeka Boulevard. Right now, they're at 46.8 on self-response rate, benchmark at 55.3% from 2010. Give you chances to kind of get a gauge for those streets in there. And then Track 6, we're looking at the boundaries around the river to southwest 7th, Washburn to Tyler. And then the response rate, 52.2% with that 2010 rate at 60.5%. Again, a lot of work to be done in there. Going on to Track 8, we would have... If we go on to Track 8, thank you. We were bounded by northeast 31st Street to that Kansas River mark, northwest Topeka Boulevard to Highway 4, down there by Reese's Group Farm. This one is sitting at 51.4%. The benchmark from 2010 is 54.1. So we're getting at least close to that 2010, even though this is one of our lower responding tracts. Historically, it looks like we're getting closer onto what that mark was. So we just... We keep going as we're going, pushing forward, and getting above that 54.1 would be great. Going on to Track 12. Let's see here. Get to Track 12.
I think there's just a delay, Dorothy, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Let's see. Our boundaries here on the street boundaries are going to be southeast 10th to southeast 21st, and then southeast Lakewood Boulevard to California with the response rate at 51.9%. 2010 benchmark, 62.9. So there's definitely some work to be done in that area if you can kind of get a gauge for what those streets and the neighborhoods there are. Moving on to 29, Track 29, from southeast 29th to around that Kansas Turnpike area, southwest Topeka Boulevard to southeast Adams. They're at 53.1%. That 2010 benchmark, 61.3%. And then finally, we're at Track number 28, which would be bounded by southwest 29th to southwest 39th, and then Burlingame to Topeka Boulevard. And then their response rate right now is sitting at 56.7%. And then that 2010 benchmark, 68.2. So definitely some work to be done in there as well. And the good thing is, is we've got some great census champions. As Councilman Padilla mentioned, Monique Gaudet with City of Topeka Neighborhood Relations. She's just been laser-focused on these low responding tracts, putting in all efforts onto these... Into these tracts to help us increase the response rates there. And again, my colleague Carlos Oguia Diaz is going to talk about some other initiatives that we can take as well. Thank you.
Can you move the slide, please, Melinda?
Yep.
Okay. You know, as an immigrant, I can understand the fears that many newcomers to the United States have. Their fears are legitimate. And two of the most common ones that I have found is with the Latino community, the fear of giving the information to the government and how that information may be used against them, especially those who don't have the documents in order. And that's a big fear. Also, with the African-American community. You know, I... The first time I met the governing board for Kansas in Topeka, appointed by the governor, we were supposed to have a 20-minute conversation. It ended up being a two-and-a-half-hour conversation. It ended up being a two-and-a-half hour conversation. And I, I was really surprised how much fear there is according to these members of the communities. And they're varying from reverends to civil rights leaders to attorneys and everything in between and educators and everything. And they said, you know, we're scared of giving the information to, to the government. And so, the fear is almost the same with the exception that they don't fear immigration, ICE, or places like that, but the fear, the fear is real. And that's when I explained to them that they are protected by federal law. Melinda and Dorothy and I will go to prison between five and 22 years if we disclose the information and will be fined, hefty fine of $250,000 to, up to $650,000. So, look, in order to overcome that fear, the best two tools I have found, and I've been traveling throughout the state of Kansas since I started to work in April last year. I just came home last week on Tuesday night after 11 days on the road and 1,594 miles later. And I continue to find that these communities trust K-12 educators and they also trust faith-based institutions. These two are the passports that we have to these communities. These communities trust their educators, their leaders, their teachers, members of that community, but also, and even more sometimes, wherever they go to church. So, my encouragement to you is very simple. Look at the map that we have given you. Please identify churches, school activities, church activities of any time and either invite one of us to go with you or yourself as part of the Compliqua and Committee Go. And A2K folks, I, I stayed today, like I mentioned earlier, I went to the Wyandotte County High School. They have a, a drive-through where they provide food for, for community members. And the line was about a mile long, let me tell you. So, what I did is I went from car to car asking them if they'd done their census. Those who didn't do it, I did it for them. And one of the things that you will find is sometimes that people don't understand what the census is. And when you tell them, hey, do you have kids go to the school? Yeah, okay. Do they get free meals? Yeah. Well, that comes from the numbers the census provides. Do, you know, do you use, you know, like Medicaid and Medicare, all of those things. So, the bottom line is education, education, education. At these specific track areas where you have one in three answering. And keep in mind the numbers that we share with you. One house equals, according to the statistics that we were given, over $48,000. So, when you're driving around Topeka, imagine, count every third house and say, that house has not responded. And then take away $48,000 for each house for the next 10 years. That should give you a sense of urgency. I'm frankly concerned. My concerns are Wyandotte County at this point and Southwest Kansas and a little bit that we could do better in Topeka. But I am concerned, we are concerned. And, you know, it was raining today, but that's okay, you know, a little water won't hurt me. But I wanted to make sure people understood that it is so vital for them to do it. Please, please, please utilize your K-12 leaders. I did a, I did a four-day event in Dodge, in Dodge City. And the results, according to somebody who made that, who did the numbers, it was close to 1,400 people that we counted. And that translated into almost $5 million in those four days of revenue for that city. And so, it doesn't take much to put a plan together, to be honest with you. What it takes is cooperation. And the way we did it with the K-12 was the superintendent and I talked and other officials in the city and other partners and said, the superintendent, once he understood the problem, he said, we are going to come together and we're going to do this. And when he spoke to all of his employees, he made it so easy. They gave us the, oh gosh, the, the big center they have there where they play sports. It's a huge center. And they just gave it to us for four days and we worked together.
Civic Center?
Civic Center, yes, thank you. And we worked together between eight and 10-hour daily and it worked. Here I am in Hugueton, last, not this past Sunday, but the one before. I was sent to Hugueton because we got information that Latinos were not answering the door in that particular town because ICE had been there for two weeks before and people were still scared of answering their, their, their doors. So, again, knowing what I know and how vital churches and faith-based leaders are, I begged them to allow me the opportunity to address the congregation. And there were, there was a good number in church, but also people watching the mass in Spanish and in English, I went to vote and I was able to educate them. And I, we did sign a lot of people up that day. But more importantly, what, what we did is we, we educated them about not being scared. So, you've got to go to the people. There's no other way around. It's very simple. Go where you, go where you need it. Sit, sit up, set up a table, your laptop, your iPad, your phone, whatever you have, and start doing people's census. You do that for the next 22 days and your budget will look a lot better than it could if you don't. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carlos.
You know, I think that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Yes, continue.
So, I, I just wanted to say that as we wrap up, we have 22 days for the next 10 years. And reaching the 67.5% that we've already reached was the easy part. Now, now comes the hard part. And we know, we all know how important it is to reach everyone in Topeka. And I am excited to see what, what happens in the next 22 days. And obviously, we would like to open it up for discussion or questions. So, however, we can help, you can, you have our commitment to continue to support the effort. So, thank you, Mayor, Councilor.
Thank you so much. I, I think that it's important for us to also appreciate WIBW, The Capital Journal, Washburn University, Topeka Rescue Mission 501, Monique Glade and Trey, just to mention a few. El Centro, there's been so many local organizations that have partnered. I think that everybody here clearly understands that the call to action is, if you know these neighborhoods, please, please, please engage and, and make sure that we're able to turn out people because it's millions of dollars that we're, we're at stake of losing in our community. Mike, do you want to wrap us up or any other comments? You're muted. There you go.
I'm sorry, I can hear you. Now, I would only add that, you know, it's, it doesn't seem like a lot to ask of any of us on this governing body to make sure that we take this message to our constituents, use the social media or the fraternal groups, church groups, or anything, any circle of friends and influencers, influencers, who will spread this message and really take home the message how this is, in a sense, owed to us. We all work hard, we all pay taxes, and this is a way to get some of that back to our community to put it to good use. And if it doesn't come to us, it'll go somewhere else. And right now, everyone needs all the help they can in keeping city services and other nonprofit organizations, access to health, education, and all those things that make life good for us. And it's a small effort, it's a civic responsibility, I believe, for us to spread the word and get the information to those people and spend a little time helping those who don't understand or can't fill out the form because they're not comfortable with it. Take a little time to do that. I appreciate you giving us this opportunity to present to the full governing body. And again, I encourage you, Monique is a powerhouse. The three people you heard speak this evening, Melinda, Dorothy, and Carlos, they are the same way. You reach out to them and they will give you every aid and everything that you need. And if you can't do it, I know they'll do it with you or for you. So, there's no reason for none of us to get involved on this. So, we all need to be a part of this effort. Thank you, Mayor.
No, thank you. And also, huge thanks to the legal women voters with their caravan in some of the neighborhoods, making sure that people would turn out to fill the census. That was a fun night. Okay, any questions for our presenters? Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. Very sobering to see four of those low-percentage census tracks in District 1. Could you or one of the speakers be, or Mike, be clear on what phone number or email we should use if we have some suggestions?
Melinda, would you provide that number because you're kind of the point of contact? And also, Councilwoman Heller.
I'm not sure.
Monique Glade, who is our city staffer devoted to that. You, I know you know how to get ahold of her. But Melinda, can I provide you another number?
I'm not sure I heard the whole question. Is there a, I heard that you.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman will like to have a phone number so that she could share some ideas on, on how to organize people in, in her district.
I would, yeah, I would say through Monique would probably be our best bet. And then we can, we can certainly help Monique, but if there's a way to channel that, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, Melinda, Carlos, and, oh God, my view stopped, my changed. And Dorothy, I want to say thank you so much. And especially a big thank you to Councilman Padilla for his devotion to this effort. He has done an outstanding job and I am very grateful to all of his work. Okay, well, with that, we move on to the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3A, minutes of the regular meeting of September 1st, 2020, and there are no applications.
Okay, we've heard the consent agenda, what is the pleasure of the body? Deputy Mayor makes a motion to approve. Councilwoman Nager seconds. Comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed, oh, Councilwoman Ortiz has a comment or a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have a comment. I received some phone calls on this and they were wondering why we were doing this at this particular time when people are struggling. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I let them know this is something that we do once a year. And it's, it's not, it just, it came up and, and they've had ample enough time and ample enough notification to know that this was coming down the pipe. So, I did want to make that clear because there was some constituents thinking that, how can we do this? People lost their jobs, people are struggling. And it is tough, but it's still something.
Oh, Councilwoman, you're talking about the action item?
Mm-hmm.
Or the consent agenda right now?
Okay, I'll say. Tony told me wrong, I'm sorry.
All right. Okay, so if there is no comments or questions on the consent agenda, we will vote by rule call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Yes, I think.
That was the.
We can't hear anything that's happening in the chamber, just so that you guys know. Okay, I heard something now. Councilwoman Dobler said yes. I haven't heard of Councilwoman Duncan and Councilwoman Lester have been called.
We have not.
They haven't. We never heard from Nager.
Okay, she said yes. And so did Dobler, he said yes, I think.
Okay, Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Tony told me the wrong thing too, Sylvia, so, but yes.
Okay, we have 10 yes.
Saying having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the action item if the court could read.
Item 4A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout imposing a real estate lien pursuant to KSA 12-808C upon certain lots and pieces of ground in Shawnee County, Kansas, to pay the cost for utility services where such payment to the city have not been made due to neglect, failure, or refusal to pay.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the approval. And council was presented a list of the current liens after a period of time of those that may have paid prior to today. So, you received an updated list and email today. And if there are questions, staff is available to answer any questions regarding this program.
Okay, so do we have a motion for sake of discussion? Or do we want to have discussion prior?
Question, Duncan. I have questions, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Councilwoman Duncan.
All right, I have a list of questions, so indulge me, please. I will direct them to you, City Manager, and then, because I'm not sure who, which staff member should answer them. You can point and click and tell me. These are in no particular order. So, I, I guess I heard Councilwoman Ortiz, we do this yearly or have?
Yes.
Okay. So, when do we collect these dollars? Is it upon sales tax, when they have to pay their sales tax? Is it upon sale of the property, share of sale?
It's a property tax collection.
Okay. So, so I assume there's some previous years we still have maybe collected?
Correct.
Okay. What bar do we use to establish who goes on this list? Because, I mean, the amounts are very different. I haven't seen, I know we were told that they're between 90 and 600 days. But what is, what is our, what are we using to establish who goes on here and who doesn't?
I'll let staff answer that question.
Okay, I think I should be unmuted now?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. So, there's a couple thresholds. Minimum threshold is it must be at least $50. That's very, very basic. After that, it must be at least 90 days past due. So, that's why the amount varies so much is obviously some people have an $80 a month bill, some people have an $8,000 a month bill. But it's minimum of $50, but also a minimum of 90 days past due.
So, then is this a comprehensive list of everybody at this time who is, meets those criteria?
Yes, everybody who's a property owner that meets that criteria. We do have additional accounts that we send to our collection agency, but we cannot put a lien on a property if the service is not in the property owner's name.
I know this year COVID is, I'm curious, have we had, do we have any process that has allowed tenant landlords to give us some issues relating to their payment issues? I mean, since March or April of this year, either the federal government or the state of Kansas has had in place some sort of moratorium on evictions. And if you assume, I just did some quick math. If you assume that an average large place has 10 people who owe, pay an average bill of 40, 50, 60 bucks a month, you know, you get six months in, that's $3,000. I mean, have we given anyone an opportunity to tell us, hey, part of this is because I have X amount of tenants who haven't paid me in five months or?
Do you know, Nicole, related to landlords, apartment buildings related to payments? Has that been part of the discussions you've had with landlords?
So, the apartment complexes that we have on here, and there may be one or two smaller accounts, but the majority of the apartment complexes on this list, we are in conversations with on at least a monthly basis, if not more frequently. They've got every opportunity to work with us about what they feel they can pay or cannot pay. At this point, the majority of the apartment complexes on this list have not been responding to calls or emails recently.
Someone just walk me through very quickly what our process is from the final pay you need to pay when we do turn it over to collections?
Nicole, I know.
And I don't need every, I mean, is it just a final notice and then they go to collections? Does our legal department do anything?
Well, we've got a couple different issues here. So, these accounts that we're either putting a utility lien on or the ones that we would be sending to collections right now, they still have active service. There's a reason we can't disconnect their service. Either we're not providing their water or, like I said, it's the apartment complexes where we're attempting not to penalize the tenants because of the landlord's failure to pay. So. So if we can disconnect service, we do, but the majority of what we're dealing with right now, these are still active services, they will remain active unless we are, no longer have any options to collect. So I'm sorry, do you want to talk about the ones that are final, or the ones that we're talking about tonight?
No, I'm just asking, when somebody owes, when we go from the process of it's, it's on your desk, so to speak, to actually turn it over to collections, does, does our legal department send any sort of notice in between? Or is it just a final letter from the utility department that we're sending to collections? Or do they get anything officially from our lawyers saying, you're in trouble? Do we, in other words, do we attempt any of our own collections?
I might defer to legal a little bit. My understanding of Kansas law is that they must receive at least two delinquent notices. And when they are actually terminated, they do receive a final demand for payment as well. So in between the time that they first go past due, they're receiving a delinquent notice every month with their bill. But when something does finally become final or terminated, they still receive two additional notices after that.
Legal, is that from util, like just the generic utilities letter, or does legal?
Councilmember Duncan, it's pursuant to the statute that's listed in the caption of the ordinance, and it doesn't require that the notices come from anyone in particular at this point in time. So utilities, I'm sure sends the notices. I don't believe that the legal department sends them out unless, Mary.
And part of the reason I ask that is, some of these are very large. I mean, how does somebody get $30,000 without our legal department or somebody stepping in and saying, we're taking you to court, or before we go through this lien, I mean, I'm just curious how those numbers get that big?
I think the process that Nicole outlined was with respect to folks who, we don't have the ability to turn their water off. So we go this route, and I think really what the city does is go over and above probably what we need to do. And when you're talking about legal notices, notices that come to them through the mail, they have had multiple, multiple, multiple communications with utility staff over a course period of months. So, I mean, if we want to change what the threshold is, then.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious about the process. For instance, if we pass, if this passes, we attach the lien. Do we then stop any future collections process or internal legal action that we would take? In other words, if somebody owes us $20,000, does, does passing this, attaching the lien mean that in general we then don't follow up through the collections process?
No, we would pursue the lien through the process.
Okay.
It's collecting the money through the lien. If they do not pay it, we have a process that we would continue through, through action after that happens, after this happens.
Right, and do we do any internal collections?
We have a collections agency that we.
Right, most of our collections are done through CBK.
Okay, but we've just decided for the large ones, I mean, I'm just curious, because obviously if it goes to collections, we only get a percentage of what's collected.
Right.
If someone owes us $5,000 and up, I mean, do we ever attempt first internal collections to try to recoup the entirety ourselves before we give up?
Well, through the, through the legal, through the utilities department, we have made multiple efforts to accomplish that, and.
That's everything, actually filing a, I'm talking about actually filing a case in court ourselves, because it's gotten so large, we don't want to lose a percentage of us, our legal staff filing the collections case, not having an outside staff. I'm just curious if we've done that in the last several years, or if that's.
Not in the five years I've been here, we've done collections work.
I'm almost done, I promise, I just have, I swear, well, okay, well, here's my biggest problem, and it's not the commercial properties as much, there, and I understand that some people, they're not going to pay, they're not going to pay, and there's an issue there. I guess, kind of to Sylvia's question that she got from some individuals, I do have a concern with the residential folks on this list, particularly those who are in that $250 to $200 and less. I mean, with all due respect, I don't know why we're putting a lien on $70, and I don't have the data of if they're 600 days past due or 90 days past due. So that one, truthfully, in these times, gives me a little more heartburn, to be honest, than, than some of the larger apartment complexes who are choosing not to correspond with us. So I'll be honest, and I guess, whether it passes or not, I would at least, I think there's about 22, if I do a quick count of residential ones that are in that threshold of $250 or less, and it would be my, it would be my preference to make a motion to remove those residential listings from this list. I just think that's a little more appropriate at this time. So I would like to make that motion, don't know if I have a second or anyone's interested, but.
Councilwoman Duncan has made a motion, do we have a second? And his motion is, for those of you that, just in case you didn't hear it, is to ensure that the residential properties that have much lower balances get removed from this list.
Yeah, the $250 and less, which I did a quick count, it's like 21 of them, maybe 20, 21 of them.
Nicole, can you answer whether or not some of these are just final bills?
I see Councilwoman Valdivia Alta la seconding that motion, or is it a question? Okay, Councilwoman, if you would allow for the City Manager to have this question answered, and then we'll come back to you.
I'm sorry, was the question on the count of accounts below $250?
Well, no, the question was, are those like final bills, or some of those, I think, are just the end of the year, we're clearing them, well, how would you characterize some of those small ones?
None of these bills are final. Anything that is listed on this lien order, lien ordinance, is an active account.
Okay, we just haven't collected through the year or towards the last 60 to 90 days?
I'm sorry, we're having a really hard time hearing you.
As far as when it might be that this has taken a year to get to this point, as far as some of these accounts, based on when the charges were incurred, or as you said, at least 90 days, but some of these could be older than 90 days, and this is just the end of, this is when we do this, so this is when some of those are going on, is what I was getting at.
Yeah, I think it's correct. There are at least 90 days, but yet many of them just choose not to pay every year. So, and I think we have some numbers on that, on the fact sheet, about how many, this is just a reoccurring, for them to show up on this ordinance.
And I'll be very honest with you, I'm sure COVID is, is putting a little bit, from my perspective, over some of this, which is why I asked a question about the rental stuff, and so, so that's kind of part of the prism this year. I'm looking at it a little bit differently than I think I would other years. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alta.
Thank you, Mayor. My question would be, have we seen an increase at all this year of more individuals being on here than last year? And again, I'm coming from a COVID perspective as well. I understand that you're saying a number of these go on continuously, but I was wondering if you, I think Spencer was saying that he counted about 22 individuals in the amounts below 250, but how does that compare with last year? Additionally, the entire amount, I think, being collected on in full is like over $350,000, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. It's slightly lower than that due to payments that we've received over the last week. But yeah, it's still in that 350 range.
Okay, and how does this 350,000 and change, how does it rate with what the levels have been for this same process that you do maybe the past one or two years, what, you know, last year and the year before?
So I can ask back at last year, it looks like we brought an ordinance for 130,000 last year, so at about 2.5-ish times what it was last year. However, last year, we did not have the significant number of apartment complexes on there. And that truly is a large amount that has been added to this. I was looking at count, without the apartment complexes, we're looking at 140 accounts of properties that are on the lien list, and that's right in line, I think we were around 120 last year.
Okay, so what you're saying, just so I understand you, is that the amount that was, the total amount that was attempting to be collected on last year was about $130,000, and now it's jumped up to over $350,000, is that correct?
That's correct, predominantly with the addition of the apartment.
With the addition of the, with the addition of the apartments. Was it because the addition of the apartments on this year's, was that because this is the first time apartments were ever added, and they've been in arrears before? And if so, then I'm still going to ask the same question, how, how has that amount, if there's been any large difference in the past year or two? Because again, as Spencer is doing, so I will do, I'm looking for any kind of COVID markers here.
Sure, we assessed, I believe, three or four apartment complexes back in 2017. Is the only time that we have done that before. So significantly less than 129 we're doing this time. When we did those back in 2017, I believe that was in the 80,000 range for just those four accounts.
Can I add a little bit more on the apartment issue? The issue that we have with the apartments is the persons that would be harmed, or those individuals that are staying in the apartment. We're, we're trying to get to the landlords, and in order to not affect the renters, we're doing it in this manner, so that eventually we can collect something. It is a way to, with, you know, like it says, 98%, 97% collection rate on these when we do a lien, which is better than us going through our collection agency. And so we believe this is a better way to go after our apartments, which have large bills, and they should be paying them because the renters are paying their rent. Now granted, there may be some individuals that are not receiving rent payments because of COVID, but generally, a lot of these are people that are property owners, landlords, that are on this list for us every year, that we work with in order to try and get payment. And so I don't think we're adversely collect, going after individuals that are reflective of COVID issues. My opinion, these are people that we have trouble collecting with years ago, and every year.
And it goes from 90 days all the way to?
It could be if there was an account at the beginning of the year, and there was no way for us to collect. If, at this time of the year, we lump it in on this list in order to collect it.
But what I'm asking is just for verification, is that the large amounts that we see with some of these apartment complexes, they've been carrying these outstanding balances for more than one year?
It could be, typical, I don't know about one year, but like some, even today, I was reading something that we get a $30,000 payment from a property owner based on a phone call and a conversation that we'll have with that property owner. And then we'll get a $60,000 payment, and then they won't give us any in a month, and then they'll fall further behind again. And so it, it kind of depends on the property owner as to when they want to pay, and I think that's partly because they jockey around their money from various accounts in order to, to make payment to us to keep things going. Based on my past history, I've seen that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lesser?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I would point out is, I did go through this list last year, and I see several similar names on there from last year, talking about the residential. And also several of them that definitely have the means to, to pay their bill, to be quite honest with, you know, with houses that are over $250,000 in value. So I just, that's my own scientific, Spencer, my own scientific analysis of reviewing it last year and seeing where it was, and then recognizing the same names as I saw as last year, so.
Councilwoman Duncan?
Well, I'll just say to that, I, I'll give you a real life anecdote. Last week, a family member of mine delivered a food basket to somebody, two people who lost their job who live in a $225,000 home. So as I often say in life, I have no idea what the financial situations of anyone is, and so that's why I've tried to at least assess tonight. With the situation of COVID, I think there are a lot of people out there that, and if they've been on this list a lot, I understand that, but since we don't have some of that information in front of us, I just, I'm more comfortable assuming the worst and hoping for the best on some of the, for some of these people.
Councilwoman Lesser?
My point was, they were on us here without COVID being a mission to you, and they're back on it again this year with that house, that's what my point was.
Okay, so at this point in time, we do have a motion. Do we have a second for Councilman Duncan's motion? We have a second by Councilwoman Valdivia Alta. Further discussion on this motion, the motion, so that we are clear, is not for the adoption of the document, is for an amendment made by Councilman Duncan that would remove the residential properties out of this list. Councilman, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I do also appreciate what Councilman Doug, and I totally understand, and I was there myself about three and a half years ago, the first time I saw this list. And as Councilman Lesser said, I know some of these people, and basically this is a way to get a no interest loan. They do this every year, it just, you know, and economically, actually, maybe, you know, economically, maybe it's smart, you know, to pay everything else, and this is, this is a free, this doesn't cost them anything. A lot of them redeem right ahead of the things or their names that show up on this, but, you know, as, if you look at the map and overlay home values, you'd probably see, like I said, a lot of the $250,000, $350,000 on these homes, and they're not paying to peak their taxes either. So their taxes are, tax burden's also less than a lot of our constituents. I think if you look at the map, I think there's only two or three individual homeowners within, inside the city limits who are on this list. So I totally understand where, where Councilman Duncan is coming from, but knowing what I know from the, from the past, I won't be supportive of this. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, my, my motion was for two residential properties that owe $250 or less.
Oh, pardon me, thank you so much, sir. Thank you so much, pardon me for the, for the incomplete motion. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Spencer, I won't be supporting this in, I've been on here a long time, and I've seen some names on here a long time as well. But I just wanted to clarify, when people had asked about it, they didn't understand the process as well, so I'm glad that it was, it was said, stated. A few years ago, me and Karen went down this list, and we called people to remind them to pay that. And again, I've got six people I'll be calling to say, hey, you're back on our list again. You know, we really need your money. I think one of the things, one guy that's on this list, he has a sewer bill that he doesn't ever pay, because he doesn't, he just owns a property. But at the end of the day, that's still his responsibility, you know, so I appreciate what you're trying to do, but I won't be supportive as well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just pending more comments and questions, and seeing none. Again, this is for Councilman Duncan's amendment. We proceed with the vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
No.
Councilmembers Heller?
No.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
No.
Emerson?
No.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
No.
Dobler?
No.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
No.
We have seven no.
Okay, so now we have in front of us the motion as, the ordinance as presented. Do we have a motion for the ordinance as presented? Councilwoman Ortiz makes a motion, Councilwoman Dobler seconds it. Additional comments or conversation with regards to the ordinance and the motion in front of us, which is for the approval of the liens.
One comment.
Ask Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, if staff could clarify, as I recall, when Councilwoman and Ortiz and I have tried to get hold of people in the past, there was a certain window of time between when we vote on this tonight and when those liens would actually be filed. If someone could share that, because that way if someone is surprised and discovers that they're on this list at the last moment and doesn't want that lien to be filed, they can run in and pay it. Brenda, are you? Brenda, are you?
I believe it's September 30th, correct? September 30th is the date.
Okay, so people have until September 30th to get it paid to the utility department, so it's not filed. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
No.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the public comment. We have two individuals signed up, the first one being Mr. Richard Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Richard Johnson again, retired policeman, 30 years of service. I'm here tonight in the opposition of the Campaign Zero recommendation to outlaw the vascular neck restraint or any other weapon of necessity. I served as the Topeka Police Department's Self-Defense Instructor for a lot of years, and that's based on my military experience. I was a second-degree black belt in Taekwondo and a brown belt in Nikito. And so anyway, I have testified in federal court in support of officers in use of force, and this is kind of a touchy subject. Anyone who would agree that the VNR should be illegal is basing their decisions on conventional wisdom. They're doing it off of rumors and that type of thing. And tonight, I have actually some empirical proof that says quite the opposite. If you're interested in knowing what it is, it's, this is the website you can go to. It's a Canadian study where they actually went into the medical area, they put devices on the people to study them as the VNR was applied to them. That way, they have a pretty good report from there, it's all on there, it's 112 pages, and I didn't want to bring any of that in here for you folks tonight. Anyway, going along with that, they've had a lot of tests that have taken place. Kansas City, they surveyed there, there were over 700 times it was used, there was no fatalities. They've gone through a lot of judo tournaments where thousands of people have used that, and there's been no fatalities or no disabilities. There are times when officers might have to use a weapon of necessity. While we no longer teach the VNR technique, it doesn't mean that it should be outlawed. We have already testified, there is a protocol that covers the officer's use of force. It determines if the officer's actions were justified under the conditions they faced at the time of the event. No policy or law can cover the conditions that a law enforcement officer may encounter. I'm going to give you a case that happened sometime back, and it was based on the use of a flashlight, that it was not considered a weapon of defense. A felon had taken off in a chase, they were in a gully, and a K-9 officer was dispatched to come out there and try and find the guy. So they had one area blocked off, they had a K-9 officer coming in from the other side. Now keep in mind, this is nighttime, it's in a gully, there's trees, limbs, all kinds of brush around. He has his dog on leash, and he has his flashlight in his hand. As he was coming along, the suspect came up out of the ditch with a fence post and tried to hit the officer. Well, the officer used the flashlight because it was already in his hand, he had a second or two to use it. Well, because it was not a weapon that was considered legal because of the way it was written, this went to federal court, because the guy was hit on the head, it fractured his skull, and that was the end of that. So we went to federal court on that, and after that, the policy was looked at, after he was acquitted of any wrongdoing, we changed it to a weapon of necessity. And in the, the part that I'm looking at there is that if we put a law down there that forbids one thing from happening, you know, that you cannot use it, the circumstances might dictate something totally different. They even mentioned the fact of not shooting at a car while it's moving.
Sir, your time has expired. Would you like to wrap up your statements?
Okay, I will wrap it up. My whole point is, is that there are a lot of things in there that we need to take into consideration, and by putting a no, against the law for an officer to act in a certain way under certain circumstances is going to create more problems than it's going to be to help. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Cassia Zott.
Thank you for letting me come speak again. Last week was pretty rough. Today, I want to speak as a teacher, a chaplain, and a poet. I am a writer, and I am published. One of the poems that I sent in through email was "Children," that has actually won an international poet award. I'd like to take credit for it, but I actually wrote that the night my daughter come home from the hospital, I just sat there watching her sleep, and that's what come up. I got to take these off, they're not for reading. I am an ordained minister, so four minutes is hard for me, but we'll get through that. The first poem that I actually had was "Children Live What They Learn," that was actually written by another lady, I didn't write that. And if you look at it, it's standard psychology, she was a psychologist that wrote that. I can say that my life wasn't perfect, I've had a lot of mistakes. My first marriage actually ended in divorce in eight years, and I had three small children. We moved to the projects, where was some renovated army barracks, where the poor families stayed. One night, a woman comes running into my house, call the police, call the police, they're going to kill them, they're going to kill them. Okay, so I called the police, and I went out, and there was a whole circle of people standing in this field. And when I got in there, there was two people in the middle. One guy was laying on the ground, and another guy had a pipe and was beating on the other one. I get in, I said, what's going on? And the one guy said, he stole my TV and stuff. I didn't, I couldn't really see because it was dark. So I get up, and I went, I said, just a minute, and I got down on my knees next to the guy that was on the ground. And I said, did you steal the TV? I couldn't see his face, it was covered in blood and stuff, and he goes, no, I didn't take it. I recognized the guy, his name was Rick. I moved back, and I stood up, and I said, Rick said he didn't take it. And all of a sudden, the whole clan said, beat him, beat him. I said, wait a minute, if that was you, would you want someone yelling, beat you, beat you, beat you? All of a sudden, it got silent, and there was a thud, 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 thud. It was dark, I didn't know what was going on. Pretty soon, the only people there in the field was me, Rick on the ground, and the guy with the pipe. He dropped it and walked away. In comes an ambulance, no sirens, nothing, picks up Rick and takes him to the hospital. The next morning, about 10 o'clock in the morning, there's a knock on my door. A detective comes to the door. He goes, lady, you're crazy for even going into there. He goes, this is the dregs of the society, we don't deal with these people. This is where my family, my three children, just moved into. Anyways, come here, I want to show you something. And the thud, thud, thud was, there was nunchucks and knives and chains, all laying on the ground, and everybody had left. Few days later, this guy comes up, he said, thank you. I said, for what? He said, for saving my life. I go, what do you mean? He said, I think if I would have hit that guy another time or two, he would have been in prison for, I would have been in prison forever. You're welcome. Few weeks later, Rick comes up, and he looked like a quilt, he had hundreds of stitches, whoops. Anyways, he said, thank you for saving my life. The doctor said that another beat, I would have died. He had a punctured lung, five broken ribs, and hundreds of stitches to put them back together. My thing is this, we have problems in this city, I know they're being worked on. I am praying for help in North Topeka, because that is where I reside now, whether I want to or not. I am a chaplain, I was going to suggest we do an Our Father prayer, because it's not just my father, your father, it's also their father, their heavenly father. I won't take the time to do that either, but I'm praying for unity in this city. And the poems that I gave out, please read them and take them to heart. I do have hard copies here, if somebody that's listening wants a copy, I can give it to them. Topeka, I don't have a home in this, in this country. I've traveled almost every state. I have learned so much about this city, I want to make it my home.
Ma'am, your time has expired. Would you like to wrap up your statement?
I'm just praying that society comes together and we treat each other with the poems. I don't care what color you are, you could be purple, red, whatever, let's work together to make this community the pilot project for the rest of the United States. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we now move on to the announcements. City Clerk?
For the September 15th, 2020 agenda, there is a presentation, which is recognition of City of Topeka retirees on the consent agenda, minutes of the regular meeting of September 8, 2020. Action items, three action items. First one is labor agreement, 2021 through 2023, WPC. Second action item is a zoning ordinance for Flywheel Fairlon located at 605 Southwest Fairlon. And the third action item is an ordinance, another zoning ordinance for Wanamaker West, Planned Unit Development Amendment, located at Southwest Wanamaker Road and Southwest 30th Terrace. And the non-action items are discussion, 2020 City of Topeka operating budget, and the second item is a discussion on the utilities stormwater program revisions.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. My one announcement I have tonight is something that I informed the governing body about last week. Chief Cochran informed me last week that he has decided to retire as of January 1st, 2021. This isn't a planned event that he is looking forward to at this point. We'll have more details in the future regarding how we'll move forward without his presence. Obviously, I will miss Chief Cochran. This announcement was something that I knew would come eventually, but when he actually turned it in, it obviously very much surprised me from the standpoint of, we've been in the middle of so many good things that we're working on, and so, but I do recognize that he's completing a journey of 33 years of service to the City of Topeka, and very proud of all the things that he's accomplished while he's been chief. So, but wanted to make that official to everyone tonight.
I don't have much to say, other than my deepest appreciation to our amazing chief. We have a one-of-a-kind person that has been leading our police department with a heart of gold. He is a cop's cop, so much so that we have had interesting conversations of telling him, you talk cop, and I talk people, but his heart is always in the right place, and he loves his men and women in service. So there will be a lot more to say about him later, but right now, I just want to say thank you, chief. Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. That's hard to pass by. Thank you, chief. Hopefully, we can work with you and make you and the citizens and everyone proud that we've taken the various issues that we have on our plate and worked through them, and had them totally resolved and ready to move forward by the time you're finished. Hope we can make you proud, we appreciate you. Switching gears a little bit, I did go to the, and speaking of chief as well, Police Athletic League, I went to the Three Shields opening event last week for the new boxing program, and it was really exciting to see all the partners that were there, to see carry forward from the past, Representative Alcala and Councilman Padilla in particular, organizing people to get what has historically been a tremendous program for young people in our community, the boxing program. It's been on hiatus the last number of years, it's really exciting to see it come back through PAL, and so, thank you, and looking forward to that. And last, the other thing I had was that I too was outside on Sunday and got sunburned because I was on the river, and I have done four other legs of the river before, but I was canoeing with some friends from the Weir to the Seward Ramp, which was a lot farther than I thought, 10.4 miles, and we had 26 mile an hour headwinds and choppy waves that were like this high, coming into Seward. But if people haven't been on the river, the water is down now, it is safe, it is incredible to be on the river. I am aware of just one organized float that's scheduled right now, and that's on the 17th of October, sponsored by the Friends of the Ca, and so if people don't otherwise have means to get on the river and want to check it out, that will, that will be a time that people can do it. Also, once we're all back together, I brought some things from Sandbars for everyone on the council. That's it, thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcalá?
Thank you, Mayor. Don't want to belabor the whole thing about the opening of the Three Shields, but I will say for my husband, it's a deep labor of love, having run inner-city boxing for 15 years. I wasn't able to attend, I did see the chief, Chief Duke, and our chief in the ring. So my hope is going to be that before retirement, that Chief Duke and Chief Cochran are actually able to do some kind of fundraising exhibit where we can see them duke it out, no pun intended. But that was, it was really, from the pictures I saw, it was really a lovely and well-attended event. Also, I had, just want to give a huge shout-out to Officer Yubara. Officer Yubara ended up helping with a situation that we have been dealing with in Oakland that has actually gone on for years, but I've been involved with for the past couple of months. There was a much-needed resolution to this issue that had put these particular set of neighbors in a very difficult and stressful situation, and we had all met together with city manager, chief, et cetera. The bottom line is, is that there was resolution that these neighbors were able to have, and Officer Yubara took the lead on that. I received email and a call about how he listened to their concerns, how he felt, they felt, at a deep level, understood by him and the fear that they had been experiencing. And I think that part of the success with all of this is that people were starting to feel heard and seen and understood with what they were experiencing in their community. And I think at base, you know, that's what most people want, they just want to be heard and understood and helped if possible. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to him. The other thing that I did want to bring up is for you, city manager, and then I'll pass on to the city clerk, and if the city clerk could give this also to Deputy Tony Emerson. Please, city clerk, let the minutes reflect right now what I'll be passing on to you in just a moment, and to the city manager and city mayor, our copies of an official ethics complaint against city manager Brent Trout. I filed this yesterday with ICMA, the International City/County Manager Association. I am requesting, city clerk, that you put this ethics complaint on file, and I asked Deputy Mayor, you do this as well. I will refer to this complaint next month when city manager's contract expires with the City of Topeka. I heard this morning from both ethics investigators from ICMA, that the investigation has started, movement has started on this said complaint. So I will be giving those to you now. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to welcome all of the 501 students back tomorrow. Hoi hoi, mighty Troy. Tony Emerson. I just want that to be on record, the Trojans- I just want that to be on record, the Trojans will be back in action. So, just, just everybody kind of be aware and kind of encourage the kids, whether it's remote or physically going back or whatever they're doing, just, just kind of encourage them. Tony, if you, if you could call, I'll give you a list of some students from Topeka High, that would be wonderful, they'd love to hear from you. And then maybe we can get Hannah to call some kids from, you know, Scott, you know, one of the Scots kids, you know, since she's a cheerleader, she interacts with them. I want to say thank you also to the chief. He has been superb at doing what he does and he's had a, a hard time, some hard shoes to fill after his predecessor. But I want to say this, you know, the chief knew the young lady and her daughter that, that was murdered and it was hard on him, it was tough on him and, and I could tell it, you know, but he, he still continued on and, and there's a lot of people, because he's homegrown, there's a lot of people that he, he knows that have either been wronged or that have either been shot or killed or whatever. But he still just maintained his professionalism, but you know, I, I seen that pain in him. I seen him hurt. I, I, I seen him and heard him say, "I need to be at every event." So that, it's, it's tough, it's very, very tough. So I just want to thank him and thank his family because, you know, without his family, he can do what he, he did. And, and last but not least, I, I want to thank Councilman Padilla. Councilman Padilla, I'm going to start wearing my shirt and, and I hope, you know, that I'll wash it every other day to get the census count out, you know? He has given us all brand-new bracelets, you know, and I'm, I'm going to put one on right now for him and I'm going to start, nice and yellow. You know, we all need to put them on so people will question us about them. And he gave us really a new attire, you know, a new shirt with accessories to go with it. And I'm, I'm going to start wearing my shirt and I'll wash it every other day so people can, you know, we got, we, we have a short amount of time, what they say, 22 days. So let's, let's really pound on this pavement for the last 22 days because he's been doing it. He's been constantly telling us, "Let's do this, let's do this, let's do this." He's been in those commercials, he's had his wife and other people in those commercials. So he's really pushed it. If he could push it for as long as he done, has done, we can do it for 22 days. So, I will be getting with Monique because Track 11 was mine and we're at 45%. And Mike, I promise you, I don't, I don't like 45, that's not a good number for me. So, I'm going to get the word out in the morning and I'll see what my numbers end up with, but it will not be 45%. I promise you that and I thank you for trying to get the money in Topeka, the much-needed money that, you're right, that is ours. So, I would send that out to my colleagues, especially Mr. Emerson who's all over the place, I'm sure that he can hand out a bracelet or two and, and he, he claims he was a Scot, so maybe he can give some of those people over there something. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, what's your response to that?
You know, Mayor, it's, as usual, she is a very hard one to, to follow. But I think she would definitely agree with me, that's great to be a Scot. Yeah, she knows it too, she knows it. Yeah, it's, you know, my, my kids now have been in school a week, started last week and it's, I'll tell you, it's elevated everyone's spirits here, so I hope it has the same effect on all the kids at 501, I, I really do. I also thank Councilman Padilla for all his work on the census. Lastly, you know, I obviously will take, will take what I'm given here and, and you know, treat it, and treat it seriously, but I, I do just want to say that, you know, he is not, he is not perfect, just like me, but I will tell you, I have tremendous amount of respect for Mr. Travani and his ethics. I obviously will look into this, but that, that, that is sad to hear there's the allegation because I, I think he is a very, very, very honorable man, so that's it, thank you.
Councilman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, because of the rotation, Karen always gets ahead of me to talk about the things I've been doing. So, I appreciate her bringing it up, but it takes time away for me. And I really appreciate the comments from Councilwoman Ortiz. I appreciate your help and I know you'll get, get out and get those numbers up. All of us need to get those numbers up. And there's going to be plenty of time between now and the chief's retirement to give him the accolades that he so richly deserves. And I'm glad that it was noted that he doesn't do that in a vacuum, he has to have his family there to help him do that. Now, I thought about that when I saw him putting all those time, all that time in to meeting everybody and listening to them, I wondered when he was going to get any rest, but that really doesn't ever bother him or come to his mind. He's just there because he knows he needs to be there. And because of that, he's set a very good example and has become a really good role model for the entire police department. For those of us who might want to throw sticks and stones and criticize, he has set the model so that people can learn that it's better to be a professional, to listen to everybody and to take the time to make judge, rather than making quick judgments. So I, I believe that he is going to lead that department better because of him being the chief of, of police. And I truly believe that having him homegrown made that big difference. In my opinion, because of the things that have happened, he was the right chief at the right time. I hate to see him leave, but I have between now and the end of the year to try and talk him out of it. I know that won't work, but I'll still be pulling on him. But again, I think that all of us were very lucky to have him in place at this time in our history in the City of Topeka. So, I'll, I'll get to him. And as far as jewelry, like Sylvia has those yellow bracelets, Sylvia, that's, I appreciate you showing that off, but today, earlier today, Deputy Mayor awarded one of your fellow councilperson with a really nice, fine piece of jewelry that he might be a little embarrassed to wear, but we know, we know that he's got it and somewhere it'll come out. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh God, Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I want to start off with a big thank you to the chief, to his family and to the people who have supported him, supported the chief at the department. You have made a lasting impression on Topeka, Kansas, and it's been for the better, so we really appreciate the work that you have done to make our department something that stands out in the country. I also wanted to extend a very happy birthday to somebody who is not local. This is Ruby Bridges' 66th birthday and in November, it will be the 60th anniversary of four six-year-old girls in New Orleans being locked into schools to help desegregate them in, in New Orleans. And if you don't know about that story, please do read about it. And it took 10 years from that day in 19, excuse me, 1960 for those schools in New Orleans to be fully integrated. And so it's just a reminder that this is a long walk that we're going through whenever we're talking about racial and social justice, but it's something that as long as we're continuing to move forward and continuing to take seriously and talk about in peaceful and progressive ways, I think that we can make a lot of wonderful moves in Topeka to build upon work like the chief has done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to Councilman Padilla for all, all his work on the census. It really, really is important, important, excuse me. And as, as he said, we'll have some time to say all the good things about the chief that need to be said. So tonight, I'll just say congratulations. I know you've got grandkids and lots of good things ahead of you and thanks for what you've done for the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Duncan?
I just have two things this evening. The first is a thank you to the city clerk in their office. A few, most people don't know, we get the list of all the public, people who sign up for public comment and it's always a list of names. And a few weeks ago, we started talking and I said, "You know, sometimes after a meeting, if we go into executive session and we're going, they, the people leave and we don't always have a way, if they said something I want to follow up on, to get in touch with them." And so we devised, maybe we should start asking to, if they will provide an email and a phone number. It's not required, so don't worry, you can still come speak if you don't want to give it to us, but, so it's been nice to see on there, that way now when people say something, if we want to follow up later, that information's there. So I think that's very, very helpful, so I'm appreciative of that. The second thing is, is a few other folks alluded to, schools are all, I believe this week now, all the schools in Topeka are officially in some form or fashion back in session as 501 goes back. It's sort of a hybrid, depends on where you go, how old your kid is, some are going all day in person, some are going online right now all day, some are doing a couple days in the classroom, a couple days out of the classroom, and so everybody's working through it. I know that we as a body have received some emails from some people with just questions, frustrations, pulling their hair out as they try to work through it. And I know I personally have received constituents who are just trying to work their way around it. And so, as someone who had a kindergartner last year who tried to do online learning for three months, the teachers were great, the school was great, but if you have someone who's kindergarten through probably second grade or so, if they're sitting at a computer, you're sitting at a computer. That's just the reality of that situation. And what I, what I will tell all the parents out there who've reached out to me is, you're doing fine, you're doing the best you can, don't overstress it. Focus on the one or two things you can accomplish and just stay in that lane. You're not going to teach them everything all at once and you're going to stress yourself out if you try to do that. So don't let that overtake your concerns because guess what? They will be back in the classroom at some point. We all hope, but I think it will be sooner than later and I think it'll be before this school year ends, so just, just do your best. And the other thing is, we've had a lot of great employers in this city who have understood the problems that parents are facing in terms of giving them some time off, adjusting their schedules, allowing, finding ways for them to work at home. To those employers, I not just say thank you, but I also say, just because school's starting, don't let that up because this is actually as stressful now as parents try to work through it. And to other employers who haven't thought about it, make sure you're touch base with those employees and just make sure they're doing all right and if there's anything you can do, please try because it's very difficult for a lot of parents right now to navigate this, especially those who have talked to, who have kids at two different schools, who go at different days and different times and, and the chaos that's there. So, so just a reminder to everyone out there, parents are doing fine and employers, thanks for all the help and keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Lesser?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just a few things. Real quick, I want to thank, thank, thank Mike as well for all his hard work and I do keep my eye out if there's any golf balls that strike into your property, like this weekend by Tom Meyer or somebody like that possibly, that could have happened. But secondly, I, I, I do want to say, I too don't always agree with, with the city manager on, on everything, but I do, I believe he's one of the most ethical and honorable people that I, I've met as well. And I think he's doing exactly what, he worked for the council and when the issue came up, the vote was nine to one for us not to do it, an executive session. So I, I think he's doing exactly what the council's told him to do, quite frankly. And thirdly, I, you know, I, I knew about this from, from chief a little earlier than other people because I've had the privilege over the, the time of being on council to be able to also call him my friend and, and the right guy at the right, at, at the right time to lead us. And I know, I, I know the only thing, only thing I know he's better at than probably than being a police chief is being a father and now being a grandfather. And I, I thank, I thank his family for, I know how much time that it takes away from my family and that's not even close to the amount of time that, that chief has given to our city. And, you know, the man, the man doesn't say that he has all the, all the right answers, but he cares and I'm going to miss him, man. I'm going to miss working with you, man. So, he promised me that he would still harass me, so that, that I'll, I'll keep my texts open for him to do that. So, thanks, Chief. Obviously, there'll be more to come in the future with him, but job well done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
City Attorney, we have an executive session. Could you please read the parameters?
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time, not to exceed 15 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privilege matters related to contract negotiations as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, Deputy Utilities Director Sylvia Davis, Senior Assistant City Attorney Catherine Walter, Budget and Performance Manager Steve Wade, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
Mayor, Ms. Robertson, I believe Councilwoman?
Councilwoman, yes?
I had my hand raised, sorry. I just wanted to make clear that the information that I passed out was not that anyone here on this governing body starts an investigation. ICMA is in charge of the investigation and I sent those letters out as I did to put on file, so that's just clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Now, we've heard the parameters of the executive session. Do we have a motion to recess? Deputy Mayor makes the motion. Councilwoman Ortiz seconds. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by the roll call vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
Okay, 10 having voted yes, we will allow to see if there's any individual in the room so that they can vacate. And then, once I have the signal from staff, we will commence our executive session. And if, if there is a need for a break, I think this is the time that the council members could just take a quick recess before we start the meeting.
Mayor, I think we're back on.
All right. The executive meeting has concluded. No actions have been taken. At this point, there is no other items in front of the body. This meeting is adjourned.